He's prepared.
We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss personnel matter and contractual matter. If we could stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Robert Teeger.
John Wallston.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dallinbaum.
Christine Beck.
Catherine Natto.
John McPhillips.
And Willow Bear and Meredith Moriari are not able to be with us tonight. I think we might have some big students with us tonight. Your obligation is to stay with us until nine o'clock or if the meeting ends before that. If we go until nine, we will take a break. At the, when, before you leave, there are sign out sheets that are sort of scattered around up here and you guys just need to sign out on one of them. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the January 18th, 2023 regular board meeting.
Some of.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item three, meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate AG Irons. He is our boys' basketball coach, and I don't know if everyone's aware, he surpassed his 200th win for boys' basketball last week, so I'd like to congratulate him. We have some Poetry Out Loud winter winners with us this evening, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Rickert to come up and just give us a brief overview of what Poetry Out Loud is, and then he's going to introduce our two students who will do some poetry recitations for us.
Yes, thank you for having us. Let's see if I can adjust this a little bit. How tall are you? All right, I'll leave it right there. So for those who don't know me, thank you for having us. It's, my name is Andrew Rickert, and I've had the great pleasure of serving as our Poetry Out Loud supervisor here for the last six years. So this past December, we held our sixth annual high school Poetry Out Loud competition, and for those who don't know, Poetry Out Loud is a national recitation contest that requires students to not only commit a poem to memory, but get at the deeper meaning of the poem, so they dig for looking at the author's intent and, you know, some, trying to communicate that in their recitations. So I brought both our 2023 champion and runner-up. So first off, we have Laurel Mench, who is our ninth grade representative. She is our 2023 runner-up and a first-timer in the competition, and then we'll have a recitation from Pamela White, who is our fourth, four-time school champion and the reigning state champion of Poetry Out Loud, as well as a national finalist last year. So she went all the way, she was one of the top eight in the country for Poetry Out Loud and represented us very highly. So thank you again for having us, and we'll start with Laurel.
"Immortal Autumn" by Archibald MacLeish. I speak this poem now with grave and level voice, in praise of autumn, of the far horn winding fall. I praise the flower barren fields, the clouds, the tall unanswering branches where the wind makes sullen noise. I praise the fall, it is the human season. Now, no more the foreign sun does meddle at our earth, enforce the green and bring the fallow land to birth, nor winter yet weigh all with silence the pine bough. But now in autumn with the blackened outcast crows, share we the spacious world. The whispering year is gone, there is more room to live now. The once secret dawn comes late by daylight, and the dark unguarded goes, between the mutinous brave burning of the leaves, and winter's covering of our hearts with his deep snow. We are alone, there are no evening birds. We know the naked moon, the tame stars circle at our eaves. It is the human season. On this sterile air do words outcarry breath, the sound goes on and on. I hear a dead man's cry, from autumn long since gone. I cry to you beyond upon this bitter air." Thank you.
"Envy" by Mary Lamb. This rose tree is not made to bear the violet blue, nor lily fair, nor the sweet mignonette. And if this tree were discontent, or wished to change its natural bent, it all in vain would fret. And if it fret, one would suppose it ne'er had seen its own red rose, nor after gentle shower, had ever smelled its roses scent. Or it could ne'er be discontent with its own pretty flower. Like such a blind and senseless tree as I've imagined this to be, all envious persons are, with care and culture, all may find some pretty flower in their own mind, some talent that is rare. Thank you.
And I failed to mention, so they're going to be representing us at the regional Hudson Valley Community College, where they'll be up against some of the best talent from our regional area on February the 24th, and from there, two representatives will move on to the state final, and so we wish them the very best, and we thank you for recognizing them today.
Thanks so much. And the last part of the superintendent's report, we had a presentation on reading back in the fall, and the board had some follow-up questions, so Dave Hurst is hopefully going to answer those questions for you. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. So yeah, some of the things that came out of the presentation in the fall, initially, we gave sort of a background on reading in general across the United States, if you will. So some folks had questions on what did it, how did it evolve here, what went into the decision-making process, and then sort of where are we now? So the first few slides, I'm going to kind of try to get to that. So if you go back, I figure 2000's a good place to start. So back in 2000, basically, teachers developed their own units, and they were aligned to the New York State standards, but we did not have a building level or a district level curriculum. So teachers were basically able to use whatever resources they saw fit to teach to the standards. Around 2004, the district developed pacing calendars that were aligned to the standards and developed a balanced literacy approach to approaching the standards. So that meant using things like Words Their Way, guided reading, read aloud, shared reading, shared writing, and Writer's Workshop, which came out of Teachers' College, and that was sort of the precursor to 2006 adopting the Teachers' College Writing Units of Study. So that was just, now we have at least one formal program to kind of overlay on top of those concepts. And again, 2014, we adopted the Reading Units of Study, again, another component to lay on the top of those, just again, so that systematically all of the teachers were now starting to use the same resources. That's not to say that weren't, they weren't still supplementing with other resources that had been developed prior. 2018, we recognized that we needed a formal phonics unit of study. Again, teachers, not that teachers weren't teaching phonics, it's that, again, they were using their own materials, so we made that, again, more systematic. So here we are now. Teachers' College did release a fully updated version of their units of study. So one of the highlights of that, which has sort of gotten a lot of negative press from their original iteration, was that no longer do they use the three Q system, which is asking questions like, does the word look right, does it sound right, does it make sense? So they've moved away from that, and it's become, as you can see, phonics was always part of their program, it's just become sort of more structured. We also, each grade level, use Teach Like a Champion book studies, so each grade level has a single book that they do a very in-depth analysis of, and it involves both reading and writing to handle that. And then we also have some supplemental phonics work that we are looking at called Haggerty. So this slide was presented, but like, all of these components, so we do have sort of our district core components, which are the Teachers' College, and I'll speak to some other areas, but they are to sort of hit at all of these items in the scarbar rope, which is sort of analogous to, in math, we have sort of computational thinking, and then we also have conceptual understanding. This sort of falls along those same lines, right? The computational thinking is sort of your phonics and word recognition, whereas your conceptual understanding is really your language comprehension. So in some ways, it is analogous to the way we, math has been approached. But we are, really are putting a focus on early foundational reading skills, phonemic awareness, decoding, including explicit phonics instruction, encoding, matching sounds to print, morphology, word study. And again, the ultimate goal is really to develop our students' ability to understand, imagine, and think critically about text, right? To discuss and make reasoned text-based arguments, and to become motivated readers, which is associated with better comprehension. And the way we do that is through these different domains, but really, it's, we really focus on a lot of developmental writing, read, write, discuss, revise, formative summative prompts. So as I mentioned, for reading, writing, and phonics, we are using the TC Units of Study. Notice phonics, there's only a formal program for grades K2. We've seen through our data that 95% of our students are fluent in phonics and phonemic awareness by the end of second grade, so there are obviously still some third and maybe fourth graders with lagging skills that we do address, but it's through, typically, at that point, they're doing something like the Sunday program. For phonemic awareness, again, we also have Haggerty that we are using now, Kilpatrick's FAST, or PAST, rather, which is a phonological awareness screening test and decodable readers. And then in terms of word work and spelling, K5, we use Words Our Way. And then for grades three through five, we do have a grades three through five spelling curriculum that was developed by our teachers. And I'll explain a little bit more about the structure of how those types of things occur in a minute. So here's just some snapshots of what some of our, the Teachers' College units look like. You can see that I chose to focus on K1 and 2, because that seems to be where there were a lot of questions in terms of phonics work, and you can see that phonics and words work is definitely embedded within K1 and 2. You can see familiar sounds and blends embedded within here. So another question came up about, well, how exactly do we decide, like, what programs we're going to use? Are teachers involved? Do teachers get feedback in this process? How, how does that whole thing work? So at the K5 level, we do have a language arts cabinet. All of our curricular areas have cabinets, and those are sort of the decision-making bodies when it comes to curriculum and assessment for the primary, or for the elementary level. At the middle and high school level, obviously, we're departmentalized, so those are the bodies that sort of make those same decisions. But the cabinets, it doesn't matter the discipline, but the cabinet consists of the content area supervisor, so in this case, language arts. Each cabinet has a principal liaison, so Dan Hatch is the supervisor, and Laura Heffernan is the liaison, which is why they presented back in September. Our elementary assistant principal for MTSS, because as you know, tier one core instruction is what all students receive through the classroom programming. Obviously, that's part of our MTSS process, so we need Jen Spiel to be involved. And then each building has one primary level, so that's K2, and one intermediate, grades three through five representative, and they meet, they get feedback from their colleagues at their buildings, they bring things back, and when it comes to making curricular changes or assessment changes, if we're going to do assessments, say, across the district, that's the body that makes those decisions. We also have monthly grade level meetings, and we are rotating the supervisors through those meetings so that they can have grade-level specific discussions as well. So, you know, this particular month, kindergarten might have been with math, first grade with PLA, second grade with science, and so forth. And then each month, they rotate through so that every supervisor has a chance to meet with the entire grade level over the course of the year. In terms of assessments, there was a question about what assessments do we use and what do the assessments actually measure? So for grades three through five, as you know, we have the New York State Testing Program, which measures reading, writing, language, speaking, and listening. I Ready focuses solely on reading, but it does measure phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary comprehension, both literature and informational text. We've also implemented something called ESGI, which allows us to take really any type of assessment and build it into this platform, which allows teachers to very quickly capture data. This has been very, very helpful in terms of our progress monitoring. So some of the assessments that we've been using are segmenting syllables, short, long vowel sounds, CVC words, sight words, blending short vowels, and then final vowel teams. And then finally, we have DIBELS, which again, is another progress monitoring tool, and also another diagnostic that we use after the I Ready benchmark for students that are in the, sort of the needy, sort of low-yellow to red zones on the I Ready assessments, and those assessments are delivered by our reading teachers, so that we have consistency regardless of what grade level within a building. The reading teachers are the only ones trained to do that, so we get consistency. And you can see that that deals with consonant names, sounds, vowels, names and sounds, spelling sounds, reading and spelling. So one of the things I did want to point out is that if you take a look at TCRWP is a Teachers' College Reading and Writing Program. So this is the year prior to COVID, how schools that use Teachers' College performed versus schools that did not, or schools overall, right? So in New York State, under 50% of students were considered proficient in ELA, whereas of all the Teachers' College schools, now that means, the all is, they might not have received any professional development, they just purchased the books, right? It's, you can see it's about eight percentage points higher than New York City, and then the ones that are truly embedded with Teachers' College, where they come in, like Troy is an example of a local district that does this. Teachers' College has people that are basically stationed there, and on a regular basis, pushing in the classrooms, helping teachers really implement with fidelity, and you can see that their success rate is even higher. And just real quick review of our numbers, because sometimes you start looking at these, you know, and I'd mentioned this when I did my academic update, they talk about sort of a national crisis in reading and math, and we're just not seeing that here, right? Our reading scores actually went up 7.4% from 2019 to now, so there was no sort of learning loss that everybody points to, which again, I think it's a horrible term, I've mentioned this before, you don't lose learning, you just might not have advanced further quite as quickly, but you're not going to lose learning. But we're at about two-thirds of our students, which is the 92nd percentile in the state, based on New York State test results. And our I Ready is somewhat similar. Keep in mind, it's not apples-to-apples, right? The state testing is reading, listening, speak, other components, whereas writing, whereas I Ready is strictly reading. Also, I Ready, we measure K through five, whereas the state test is only three through five. But they're fairly consistent in terms of what they're measuring. And those, I hope, addressed most of the questions. If there were others, I will do my best to answer those.
I'm trying not to put you on the spot. Did anybody have additional questions for Dave?
Yep.
Dave, the Teachers' College proficiency slide that you had, that made the comparisons, what timeframe was that?
That's the New York State test in May.
So just for the one year?
Right. Well, so yeah, I mean, 2019 was the most, I guess, recent data that was, so, most people consider sort of, obviously, over COVID, the test wasn't given last year, people try to stay away from making too many comparisons with it, just because you're coming off of two years of no testing and so forth.
And was the, in 2019 included that increased focus on the phonics? Is that?
If those schools, I would assume most of those schools used those, but 2018 is when the phonics program came out. And again, that's not to say that phonics wasn't being taught, it was just teachers were using their own phonics programs.
Right.
By moving to the Teachers' College, they blended with the writing and the reading units, and they gave everyone the same opportunity to teach phonics in a systematic way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Catherine?
Got a couple of questions, but on this slide, just to put a really, really fine point on it, you're saying that Bethlehem is one of the schools that has adopted the core?
We're in all. We received professional development when the kits first came out. We had somebody coming here probably four to five times a year to work with our teachers. We haven't done that since COVID, but we do not have embedded people from Teachers' College here on campus, doing demo lessons, watching teachers, coaching teachers. So like, schools like Troy have arrangements with that, where they have dedicated people that are there all the time.
So we did professional development. When we first adopted this, which was in, I'm sorry, which year was that?
So the bulk of the professional development happened, kind of in phases, in 2006, '07, there was quite a bit, just around the writing units, and then I would say, it was actually before the reading units even really came out, it was probably like '13, '14, at, leading up to them, us being adopted, because we had adopted them, they came out maybe in 2012, we didn't adopt them fully till '14. So we had some teachers piloting them, we got some feedback, we did a lot of professional development, and then 2014, we, the cabinet fully adopted them for everybody. And then the same thing with the phonics, we had folks, probably, starting in 2016-ish, piloting the phonics units, getting feedback, and then the cabinet moved to say, yes, this is the program we want to move forward with, in terms of that.
I have other questions, but I didn't want to, I didn't.
Go ahead.
No, I'll go first.
And then, I mean, just to provide some context, I was one of the board members who had asked, and I really appreciate you putting this information together. I know that there's, it's in a lot of different places, and I appreciate your time and effort on this. I mean, one of the reasons this came up is because there was a big investigative journalism piece that resulted in a really interesting podcast called Sold the Story that was focusing on a particular reading program that I believe you were referring to as including the three Qs when you were giving your presentation.
Right.
And so I was curious as to was Bethlehem using that? How are we using that? How are we not using that?
Yes, so that podcast was basically a direct shot at Teachers' College program. I just want to be really careful, so, you know, what was presented in that podcast, obviously, there's truth to everything it was saying, but there's also ways of framing the truth where you're leaving out other evidence, right? So there have since been several articles from sort of independent reviewers that have sort of made counter-arguments to a lot of what was presented in that podcast, not with the facts themselves, but the way some of it was being presented. Some of the, the words that were used within it were very biased in that, it just, it only painted one side of the story, right? So, and Lucy Cawkins agrees with parts of the podcast, which is why she made changes to her program, but some of the, even in some of the quotes they used from her, it wasn't the full quote or it was taken out of context, and she's since sort of explained, well, this is exactly why I've changed my program, right? They almost painted it as if she never, ever paid attention to phonics, which absolutely is, that is not the case whatsoever. So there were some really, there were some good truths in that podcast, and Lucy actually, who, Lucy Cawkins, if you're not familiar, is the one that sort of authored the Teachers' College Units of Study. So she's made adjustments based on some of that, not directly that podcast feedback, but similar feedback from others, right? So.
And what I, go ahead. And I think with the, the crux of that, or one of my biggest takeaways on that was the, was the leaning for her program to, or the, for, for her program to be leaning into situational cues and clues for reading rather than digging deep. cues and clues for reading rather than digging deep in, you know, phonics and word decoding and that part of, part of reading, and what is, what is better for students and what, what is more successful for more students, but then also what is going to help our, our students who struggle the most with reading? So I guess, as Bethlehem continues to evaluate this, and one of the things I'm hearing in your presentation tonight is that we are leaning into phonics, we are leaning into those hard skills.
We've always, we've always had phonics, it's the matter of.
I didn't mean to imply otherwise.
So that's where it gets a little tricky though, so I mean, we've always, teachers have always used phonics as part of their core instruction. It's just the degree to which varied from teacher to teacher, right? Which is why we adopted the phonics units. And then, in having used those for a few years now, we're saying, okay, we have some students that that still is not doing the trick for, right? So we're looking at other phonics programs as well to help supplement that, so Hagerty is one of them, for students that are really struggling. We have, some students are taught using the Wilson approach, some are taught using the Sunday, which is very, very prescriptive, which is first, which is based on Orton-Gillingham.
Yeah.
And there's very rigid criteria to even sort of be identified for that program. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, because as somebody, because listening to, you know, listening to the podcast and getting into that, it definitely raised a lot of questions about, you know, what is the, what's the best approach for our students. My, my last question, when you, would you go back to the assessment slide, where you, not the charts, but rather the list?
The actual assessment.
Of which ones with the DIBELS and whatnot?
Oh, yeah.
One of my favorite, one of my favorite acronyms. So, DIBELS, if I'm, am I remembering correctly that that's an in-person assessment that the teacher?
Yes, so ESGI and DIBELS are both one-on-one with the student.
Cool. And, and are, and DIBELS is for students who are struggling, that's when we'll do a deeper assessment there?
Correct.
ESGI, is that also for those identified as struggling?
But we also use ESGI to correct, collect baseline data on, like, our kindergarten students.
Okay.
So when we do our kindergarten screenings now, we're using ESGI. ESGI really is just a platform for housing assessments that are done face-to-face. The difference being, so the student would have, say, an iPad in front of them, and it might show like the letter A, and the teacher will say, read the letter in front of you. And then the teacher's screen will be like yes or no. And so they're tracking the data on there, and the student is just visually seeing, it's kind of like flashcards.
Got it.
But digital, that way, when the teacher's done, all of this data is in there, and we have it, yeah.
Right, right, right. Thank you, I, thank you, I appreciate that.
Steve?
I had a couple of questions, and obviously I've had three kids in the district that have had varying degrees of reading instruction that have changed over the years. When did we introduce the Hagerty phonetics?
This year.
This year?
Yes.
So, in the classroom right now, do all teachers K2 use the same instruction for phonetics and introductory reading skills?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, when did that start?
2018.
The only other question I really had was with regards to the explicit and direct instruction where we're using I Ready, and I, we talked about this a little bit during the presentation, we use I Ready for a lot of the diagnostic review of a student's reading ability. What are the teachers doing on an explicit, direct, one-on-one, if it's not a student that needs additional help or AIS services?
Yeah, so the Teachers College units of study have assessments embedded within the program, so teachers are assessing students constantly throughout the year. So, I mean, one of the, if you're in a classroom and you're seeing the work done, many times teachers are conferring with individual students, and we're working through what they're either reading, what they're writing, at the primary level, working through sounds with students. It's much more small group at the primary level, so they're, they're constantly doing sort of formative assessment, which is, you know, might be in small groups, and then more detailed assessments at the end of units. There are assessments built into the program. And then the, I would say, a real heavy piece of the assessment comes with the book study. I'll share maybe small pages, because I have it in like snippets, I can share out some pieces of what the students are exposed to when they're doing the book studies, I think that'll give you a better idea of how deep the assessment is when they're doing that.
So a teacher's able to assess how a student is reading, not that they can actually tell you what the words are better in front of them, but they can assess directly, not via computer.
Comprehension, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I had just a couple. One is, could you send the presentation out?
Sure.
To the board, especially, I'm sure Will and Meredith would like to see it, but that way.
Certainly, that's easy.
A couple, so the detail, some of the slides, maybe.
Yeah, for sure.
And then the other one, I think will also be, well, hopefully is easy as well, which is, would you be able to send, send us a, I don't know if there's a table of contents or some elaboration on what the units of study for the writing, what that consists of, kind of like what's encompassed?
Yeah, I can send along, like I said, I'll send along some samples of, I think I can pull reading, writing, and phonics units of study, some samples, and then the Teach Like a Champion, some pages from what a unit looks like in terms of working through those books, for sure.
Are you going to be able?
Okay.
Holly? Go ahead.
Would you go back to the Bethlehem assessments?
Nope.
How we're doing? Awesome. I just want to point out, like, this is, this is fantastic, and our teachers are doing tremendous work in the classroom, and they're being supported by, by great administrators. And I just wanted to, to say thanks, and to be clear, like, when asking these questions, it's part of a, part of a larger conversation, it's part of understanding what is or isn't happening here, and also just understanding how do we make sure that we're continuing to grow those really successful, successful blocks, and what other ways, either just by shining a light on things, or asking questions, or providing encouragement, can I, as a board member, support programs that are going to continue to support our kids, and again, especially those that are struggling? So deeply appreciate the time you put into this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. No, that's all. No, you're welcome. I'll be waiting for you. I have one guy say later. Next up is our, our board report, and I just had two quick things. One, I wanted to congratulate the cast and crew and directors and all the parents that participated in the musical at the middle school. I had a chance to watch The Wizard of Oz, and, and I thought it was terrific. And what might be the, hopefully the last official outing for the middle school auditorium, as it is now. And then, second, I saw that there will be information, if it's not out already, they'll be coming out about the Lab School barbecue in March, so keep an eye out for that information, if that's something that feels to you. Anybody else have something? Go ahead.
I actually, I don't know if I got out of order on the agenda, can I ask one more question of the administration, not on the reading, but on other topics?
Sure.
Is that an okay time?
Go for it.
Sorry, thank you. I just wanted to follow up, reached out, we went, in Albany County, we went into, you know, the COVID high zone again, and then out of the COVID high zone again, which is fantastic. But in doing so, maybe want to follow back up on the air filters and air purifiers that were in, that are in the classrooms, if I'm not mistaken, Albany County granted us the funds of the purifiers themselves, and I was just wondering if folks could speak to the replacement cycle of those, like, how often they have to be replaced, are they up to date, is there anything that we need to be considering for the budget or for anything else on those?
So, my understanding, in speaking with Nick and John, can add to this, is the filters are supposed to last for five years in the current purifiers we have. My understanding also is that the filters are quite expensive, over $200, and so by the time that they would be replaced, the machines probably would be not, I'm not sure that we would, it would be of value to replace the filters at that point. Is that your understanding, John?
So the filters are actually roughly 200, excuse me, $290.
$290?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the machines only were like.
Like 450 or, or under 500, so the ROI, depending on your, your machine and your filter component, you know, one of the things I want to stress in terms of the filters, there are high-end filters, almost like a HEV filter, with various layers of fair mesh and fabric for collecting a particulate, so it's not similar to your furnace filter that you, so you can see through their, their high end, so that's why their life expectancy is longer.
Longer, and that's probably why they're more expensive.
Yes, right.
So then in a couple of years, we'll have a conversation about what to do about those. Cool. So thank you. And are they, you know what, I don't know, and if you don't have the answer to this now, that's fine, but are, are they continuing, we have 500 of them, are they largely operating well, are we seeing them?
Yeah, the only thing I would, the biggest, I think, complaint when you try and put them on the higher levels, they're just very loud in the classroom, so they generally are on the lower middle range during the day, just because of that, somewhat disruptive.
Are, so are you considering not replacing them when the useful life is up in five years, or?
I haven't even, I haven't even thought about that.
Oh, no, I was looking at you, John, because I, I didn't know, because you were saying they're like $500 a piece, and.
To be determined.
Um, yeah.
To be.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
Next, we have our student reports, do we have anybody here from the High School Student Senate?
Hi, good evening. Recently, in Student Senate, we've been continuing to plan our snowball dance, which will be happening on February 11th, and any high school student can purchase a ticket through my school box in advance. For the dance, they're $10 each, and tickets will also be sold at the dance, but because of the weather, we do encourage our students to get them in advance, so they don't have to be waiting and can just get right into the dance. And additionally, we have approved two new clubs for the school, including Dance Club, which their goal is to provide an inclusive environment for aspiring dancers and their friends, so that they have a opportunity to learn and choreograph their own dances, not determined based on if you have enough money to go to a private dance company. We also approved, and Jewish Food Club will be happening, where students will, students will bring in, will bring in various Jewish food cuisine, and other students will be able to try it and be able to try new food and new cultures' food after school. And we are also continuing to plan the Eagle Challenge in April, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the Middle School Student Council here tonight? I thought yours was supposed to be? I thought it was supposed to have some. Maybe I got lost. Next up is our presentation this evening, and we have our State of the Schools presentation by Ms. Whitman.
So tonight, we are doing our annual State of the Schools presentation, and the district's mission is to educate and prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be engaged community members. Tonight, in the State of the Schools, I want to touch a little bit on COVID and what the year is looking like this year, our strategic plan and annual goals, school, the school climate survey, some safety updates, where we are with our capital project, enrollment projections, and this is really the kickoff to our budget development process. So what guides our decision-making, we have a five-year strategic plan, which I'll talk a little bit more about, that we help develop our annual goals and action plan, and that guides our budget development. However, we've also learned through COVID that we need to be prepared to expect the unexpected. So you'll see, in tonight's presentation, we've had to make some shifts in some of our planning as we move forward. In regards to COVID, I am happy to say this year has been much more of a typical school year. Our student clubs and activities, athletics, our musicals have all returned with no restrictions. There's definitely a noticeable difference in the hallways, in the cafeterias, in the classrooms, and certainly, we still have our challenges. As Catherine just said, we still have COVID around, we've also seen increases in flu and other respiratory viruses, so although our attendance rates are certainly better than they have been in the past, there are still impacts to attendance because of some of the illnesses, particularly in late fall and continuing into winter. In regards to the strategic plan, we implemented our strategic plan back in 2018, '19 as a five-year plan. Our mission statement, as I just read, we updated, and we adopted four core values of academics, character, community, and wellness. With COVID, as I mentioned, we have to turn a little bit and change, so we did revise our goals and reset our metrics, and now our strategic plan for five years is from 2021 to 2026. It does include 53 metrics, which I'll touch on shortly, to help us measure progress and identify areas for improvement. Our first core value of academics, instructional and assessment practices that are aligned to a strong and relevant curriculum, has 23 measures that we're targeting as we move And I'm not going to go through all of these, I think everyone is familiar with the metrics, but I do want to point out a couple of things. In our academic metrics, we are generally measuring assessment data. So we're, Dr. Hurst mentioned the I Ready data, that is our primary diagnostic data for grades three through eight, and if you recall, at the onset of our strategic plan and metrics, we did include the three through eight New York State assessment data in ELA and math, but if you recall, also, the assessments were changing quite a bit, we had a lot of opt-outs during a period of time, and so we decided to go with I Ready, which is a nationally norm-based diagnostic assessment, is our data. We certainly can revisit the state assessment data if it becomes more reliable in the future. When we look at our high school data, you'll notice that much of that is based on our Regents' results, and we did have to do a bit of a reset with much of this data, because we had data that we, again, developed back in 2018, '19, and set our baseline based on generally a two- to three-year average. With COVID, we didn't have many of these assessments, so we set a new baseline, we have an actual measure, and then we have targeted measures. So I think we talked about this quite a bit last year with our administrative team during our summer retreat. Really, I think after this year, we'll have a better baseline to consider, and perhaps we'll still need to make some adjustments with our target data, but we're kind of doing the best we can with some ongoing challenges still with the pandemic. That's all right. The one thing I want to point out on this slide is, when we're looking at our assessment data, we are targeting specifically achievement gaps, and our gen, our largest achievement gaps we've seen historically has been with our special ed population and our economically disadvantaged population. So that is an area, particularly with ELA, that we did see an increased gap in. Again, it's still, you know, going through the pandemic, some of those students were challenged to receive some of the instruction when we were remote. We also only have that data currently for grades three through eight, because we didn't have Regents' exams for a couple of years, so we'll look at, revisit that at the end of this year as well. Moving on to character, positive character traits are essential to becoming contributing members of society, and we have three data points that we're looking at under character. One of the areas that is a big emphasis of the district is to look at extracurricular participation. There's tons of evidence that indicate students who are involved outside of the classroom are more successful in school. So we do have that, and that's directly reported from students from the Student Climate Survey, which we just administered, and I'll talk a little bit more about in the next few slides. We also look at our DASSA and VADER incidents, again, with COVID. Those were probably a little off, so we'll need to reset those at the end of this year. And we do also track students who are registered to vote through our Social Studies Department. On to community, our goal is to strengthen family, school, and community partnerships through transparent communication. We have five data points that we measure in this particular area. The top area is. The top area is done through our Budget Exit Survey. It's a question that people who complete the survey are asked to rate the quality of education provided by the school district as outstanding, excellent, or very good. We also track the number of voters. You can see last year, we did have an increase in the number of people turning out to vote in the school budget. And the percent of a favorable budget vote we track. The Community Service Hours relates to our students and also the number of community members receiving information from the school district. And that's taken from School Messenger, which we are also going to be changing for the coming year. And I'll talk about that during the presentation as well. And finally, wellness. Enhancing social, emotional wellness and balance for students and staff by supporting active, healthy lifestyles and promoting positive behavior. In this particular category, we are actually tracking 22 measures, most of which come from our Student Climate Survey. So this generally is students reporting out. In this particular area of metrics, these are questions directly from the Student Climate Survey, where students report how they feel about a particular statement. You can see that our goal is to increase these. We'd like to generally get most of those above 90% down the road. So the one good thing I'll mention just about the Student Climate Survey, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation, is despite COVID, we did the survey last year, and we actually did not see a tremendous negative impact with much of the climate survey. The other piece of this area is in attendance. And I just want to mention with attendance that because of COVID, these numbers are, will definitely need to be reset because this data is from last year. You can see the significant spike in chronic absenteeism. But that's how we had to track it. So I think at the end of this year, we'll have to get, go back and revisit those numbers. And that will probably be our starting point moving forward and tracking that information. Even though I do anticipate that our attendance rates will still be a bit higher than they were, or absenteeism rates will be a bit higher than they were prior to COVID. But I think we need to kind of get a number and move forward with that. This area is also where we track our suspension data. Again, through COVID, these numbers, we wanted to take a look at at the end of this year to get a better baseline. We do, again, track these and break them up by students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged students because those are also the two subgroups that we tend to see higher suspension rates with as well. And moving on to our annual goals. One of the things that I think COVID taught all of us is that more is not always better. And streamlining things with more of an emphasis and focus probably is where we should land. And so this year, what we decided to do, instead of having a lot of different goals, is to have three goals that are outlined here that all the schools and all of the staff can get behind and support. And Goal One, which is to cultivate culturally responsive faculty, staff, and classrooms. You'll see we identified specific areas and actions under each of our core values of academics, character, community, and wellness. And to highlight some of the action steps for professional development in our first goal, all staff will participate in targeted culturally responsive learning. We're looking to do equity or learning walks, which are walkthroughs in classrooms using a culturally responsive classroom checklist and looking at our healthy environments, where lessons, classroom building, and buses that encourage student interaction. In regards to some of the professional development that has taken place this year, we've done fundamentals of diversity, equity of inclusion, the impact of microaggressions, addressing unconscious bias, language or gender training, equitable practices in the classroom, and also grade-level book studies. The equity learning walks that I mentioned basically are walkthroughs in classrooms and in buildings to look at what we see and what we hear happening. And there's a short video that highlights some students talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion.
In the year 2022, where we have recognized the obstacles that students face in education, the importance of diversity becomes prominent. We, as students, deserve to see and feel representation, not just in our student body, but also among the staff.
I feel that a lot of high school students nowadays really struggle to feel like they're accepted and welcomed into their communities, regardless of what they look like.
When you don't see anyone who looks like you, it's sort of a feeling like, like I shouldn't be here. And there's nothing to corroborate or support the idea that you, it's okay to be here. It's okay to exist.
They didn't see what I was capable of. They just saw me for the IEP, that I had a disability.
Our generation will be the next senators, lawyers, doctors, architects, and professors. Until then, it is up to our educators to ensure that we are equipped with the tools and skills to maintain the promise of the American dream.
I really do feel like education is the basis of improvement. And without an educated community, you're going to have a hateful community.
Give the students the building blocks. Give the environment and the people within the community the building blocks to be able to succeed.
I feel like it sends like a signal to the child of like, someone is rooting for you.
In order to get a multifaceted and comprehensive education, you need to have a multifaceted and comprehensive cultural perspective.
Teachers have to be open to learning about their students.
It makes us seen. And, you know, it doesn't only make us seen, it makes us feel seen.
As we highlight the immense impact that equity in our environments has made on our youth, it is important to note that our mission is not done.
Having a diverse staff is the most necessary thing that you need in order to establish diversity, to establish equity, and to establish inclusion, and to really help students of color feel seen, feel heard, and be seen and be heard.
It's a very nice feeling, being able to walk into one of my classrooms and seeing a guy who has experienced the things I have, who has that same cultural knowledge as I do.
And if more kids had people who they could identify with, I feel like they would open up quicker, which would lead to better results in school.
We will continue to strive to positively impact our students' learning experiences by implementing as diverse of a culture that we can for future-leading generations of our country.
If we don't address the topic, then it doesn't really get talked about. You have to be willing to unlearn and relearn.
You're supposed to be trying to get us to express ourselves out in the real world. How are we able to do that without having it in the school?
I see diversity through different types of people. And, you know, each person has a different experience. I need people to understand that deaf people are on the same level as hearing people. We're not different. We just can't hear. That's all.
Getting to know other people and like learning things about them makes me like learn about myself.
There are those who have a mindset that's willing to change. And if you can at least get through those people, it's worth it. And it's worth going through knowing that, you know, my younger sister and my younger cousins won't have that experience. Or if they do, it'll be less frequent.
Finally, I would like to thank you for listening to our student voices and understanding that as a listener, you are contributing to furthering the potential that every single student has to succeed. Thank you.
And I don't know if you recognize, the background was our library. Four of our students participated in the making of that video. So I thought they did a great job. Okay, on to healthy environments. Looking at lessons in classrooms that encourage student interaction. So some of the things that we've done to date. We've had high school students do Read Alouds, a visiting elementary school, adding more diverse, age-appropriate reading collections. And at seventh and eighth grade, we'll be presented by Capitol Rep with Harriet Tells It Like It Is. Our next goal of increasing academic rigor. Here are some of the action steps that we plan to do or have already completed related to this particular goal. And to highlight some of those, Dave talked a little bit about this. You've heard a lot about Tier One instruction, where we're setting expectations for what every student receives in the classroom and highlighting our best practices and sharing of best practices for all students to be able to succeed. And just as a reminder of Tier One versus Tier Two and Three. Again, Tier One is core instruction for all students. That is what the majority of students would receive. Tier Two instruction, students may need a little extra. That could happen in the classroom or out of the classroom, generally in the classroom with a provider perhaps pushing in. And Tier Three is a very small percentage of students, 1% to 5%, who really need that small group or one-on-one interaction with intense intervention services. Quality Tier One instruction, some of the things that, in Bethlehem, you heard a lot about our reading program. So to highlight some of the other areas. Our science teachers are implementing new curriculum aligned to the New York State standards. We also, in talking about math, we, in addition to IREDDI, our teachers are using Tang Math and First in Math. Our subject supervisors are holding the grade-level meetings with elementary teachers to work on curriculum and assessment and align teachers' use of specified curriculum. And we have 10 elementary co-taught teams who are reviewing IREDDI data, New York State data, ESGI, achievement gap data, to also develop targeted classroom interventions for individual student interventions. We, this year, I think this was talked about a little bit in the reading presentation, but we've spent a lot of time focusing on our youngest learners in kindergarten. We're currently, began in September, where all students were getting intervention for reading, occupational therapy, speech and language, and social-emotional teaching within the classroom. Also, the Speech Department and Motor, Speech and Motor Department are working on interventions related to research-based strategies for our youngest learning. If you went into a kindergarten class this year in the fall particularly, you would see kindergarten centers focusing on problem-solving, cooperative play, motor skills, and reading and writing. Onto our older learners. You saw this slide in the Academic Update. I think it's a testament to our students and our staff. We have the highest participation rate of students taking and challenging themselves with AP courses. And I think more importantly, we have the highest success rate in students achieving a three, four, or five on these exams. Talking a little bit more about Tier One best practices for our social-emotional curriculum. And I think that we're seeing some positive results with this based on our climate survey results. This year, we did also introduce what's called the PAST Survey. It's similar to a climate survey, except it's used for all students K through 12. And it's really focused on how is the student feeling? How is the student feeling about school? And we're administering that in the fall and the spring. So we'll see how those results compare to the climate survey just on grades five through 12 we administered in January. Our continuous improvement at the elementary level is identifying best research-based instructional practice using data. The continuous improvement at our secondary level is centered on grading for equity. Also, our secondary ELA teachers are updating their scope and sequence. Templates created by the elementary school teachers, so there's a continuum, K through 12. And our science cabinet has created assessment rubrics, which are specific to the new science curriculum and lessons using a one-through-four scale. And finally, our nurses have been working on updating some of our seizure resources for teachers to use in working with students who have seizure disorders. Also with healthy environments, if you, aside from this room, if you go around many of our buildings, you'll see a lot of new furniture, flexible furniture, which allows students to participate in more collaboration and just be in a more aesthetically pleasing learning environment. Cell phone use also is an area that we're looking at. Currently, elementary and middle school devices are not used during the school day. At the high school, we ask students to put their phones in a sleeve in the classroom while instruction is taking place. Students are, however, looking, are able to still use phones in the hallways, study halls, lunch, and libraries. So one of the things we are currently looking at are called yonder pouches. They're currently used in more than 1,000 schools. We have had some students and staff visit a local school and they've been in touch with some other schools who've implemented this. Essentially, what would happen is if we implement this, students would receive a pouch. All their devices would go in those at the beginning of the day. It would remain locked through the day. And at the end of the day, when they leave, or if they left during the school day, it would be unlocked. Our third goal of increasing community engagement, increasing community engagement, identified here are some of the things we're doing in this goal. And to highlight some of those, experiential learning. Our goal is to provide more experiential opportunities for students. In community service, one of the areas that kind of came out of COVID was to try and engage our older students, our high school students, to do more community service in our elementary schools or middle school when possible. We're also looking to expand recruitment pathways and increase, we have and continue to increase accessible communication, including translation services and ADA compliance. We also are re-establishing the Green Team in many of those efforts. And our goal in community engagement is to reach out to our parents and community members to try and engage them back in our school community because for the last couple of years, that really hasn't been much of an opportunity. So some of the opportunities our students have had, these are high school opportunities, where we've had guest speakers in our science series, as well as in our Excel program, to talk to students about their personal experiences or their pathways in their careers. Lab School is also a program in the high school that involves experiential learning, but also brings in a sense of community. So there's a short little video from the president of Lab School.
I'm the president of Lab School. And here are three reasons why I think Lab School has helped me at BC. Reason number one, Lab School helps you establish a community within the high school. This community/family will stay with you all the way up until your senior year. Reason number two, Lab School allows you to step outside of the high school learning environment and participate in other learning activities such as field trips or community service. Reason number three, Lab School gives you a huge leg up on your research experience. I was never confident with writing or presenting. Personally, I am now able to write eight to 10 pages and give an eight-minute presentation on a topic of my choice confidently because of Lab School. And those are the three reasons why I think Lab School has been a great fit for me at BC.
This photo is actually a picture of some of our high school stu- Is that right? Trying to move me along. Of our high school students who went to Hammagrail to talk about their personal immigration journeys. This is part of the fourth-grade curriculum on immigration in elementary school. I mentioned expanding our recruitment pathways. So we are working on an agreement with Clarkson for potentially creating a teacher residency program at BC. This could offer a full year of classroom apprenticeship for pre-service teachers. They would work an entire year alongside a highly-trained mentor teacher. And teacher residency programs usually require candidates commit to teach in the school for a minimum of three years. Accessibility, I think everyone is aware, we launched a new website in the spring of 2022. We're striving to ensure the district website is accessible to all individuals, including those with visual, hearing, motor, or cognitive disabilities. Most of the information is HTML, not all of it, which can be used with screen readers. And we are working to improve our translation services. Currently, the website translation is available in 18 languages. I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we currently use School Messenger as our means of communication with our parents and community members who sign up. We are looking to transition to something called Parent Square, which will streamline the way families receive and share information. the way families receive and share information with the district and the school and staff. It's a little more visually appearing, it's appealing, it's user-friendly, it has real-time translation in over 100 languages. We're looking to roll this out in the spring of 2023 and have it be fully in use for 2023-24, and we have a short little video just highlighting what Parent Square does.
Parents are busy, and they're getting school information from everywhere. Teacher apps, school texts, email newsletters, district calls, backpack flyers. Too many methods, too many places to look. Schools don't know if they're getting through all this clutter and noise. Who is saying what? If family contact information is current, and who's not being reached? Wouldn't it be better if everything was in one place? So you and your families could be sure nothing and no one is missed? It's time to get organized, to get unified. Welcome to Parent Square. Parent Square unifies family communications from the district office to the classroom, all in a single platform. From district-wide alerts to individual parent-teacher messages, Parent Square's communications tools are built to work together, not piece together. Staff have to learn only one system. Parents find everything in one account. It's more than messages, it's also school services that rely on two-way communications, like filling out forms, scheduling conferences, excusing absences, and responding to progress reports. All fully integrated, so parents can reply by web or app and miss nothing. Administrators also miss nothing. Usage and participation reports let them know who's not being reached and help improve communications equity. And they can trust contacts and messages will stay private and secure. Schools also increase engagement and family connections with Parent Square's unique ability to verify and flag updates to contact details. Parents can pick preferred ways of being reached and use any of their phone numbers or email addresses to log in. That gives parents control and schools confidence important messages make it through. With Parent Square, schools get a unified communications platform that saves time. They stay in touch with families easily and consistently. Parents have just one login account to find information and communicate with schools and teachers. They're more satisfied and involved. Parent Square, all of your family interactions in one place. Parents are busy, and they're-
Regarding being involved, this year, we had our first-ever BC Spirit Run. It was very successful. It was on Veterans Day, it was a Friday. It was great weather, and we hope that we will be able to continue this moving forward in the future. And we are back to our green efforts generally in the district that was somewhat on hold during COVID. Our Lab School students presented to elementary on recycling. Our reusable trays and metal flatware are being used now in our elementary schools and the middle school. We are returning to composting. We had America Recycles Day at the farmer's market, and we're participating with the town in the first annual giveaway weekend, which helps neighbors connect to recycle and reuse items around town. And the middle school, if you are not familiar with the scarecrows, this obviously is a huge community attraction. People go to the middle school just to see all the scarecrows, so here's a little just clip of students making the scarecrows this fall.
Scarecrow. Put it on. No, don't. It's always very fun because the whole community loves to see the scarecrows.
Teen building and like being able to spend time with your friends.
Oh, that's a good one. Don't come and help me.
Now we have to tie it off.
The net was name is both.
I don't know if they all get names or not. So moving on to the school climate survey, we just completed this in January. The school climate survey is feedback that helps us better understand the perceptions of students, staff, and parents. monitors progress, is part of our strategic plan, as I mentioned in the metrics I shared a little while ago, helps us adapt to shifting needs, and helps us make data-driven decision-making. This year, we had over 3,200 surveys completed. Over 2,200 of those were our students, again, this is for grades five through 12, that's the grade levels the survey is designed for, seven, almost 800 parents and over 200 staff. We use EdVistas to administer the survey, so it's easily collectible and easily able to disaggregate the data. And the data is still being reviewed because we did just close that survey a week ago, and preliminary data that measures positivity is showing, I'll go over in just a second. So the way the climate survey is broken up is in three categories in safe and supportive schools, under engagement, safety, and environment. And this data is reported in what's called positivity reports. So for example, one of the statements that students respond to under relationships is my teachers help me feel good about myself. A positive response, obviously, in this statement would be strongly agree or agree. Under safety, a statement that students respond to is I sometimes stay home because I don't feel safe at this school. Obviously, a positive response would be disagree or strongly disagree on that statement, and then that is broken up and disaggregated into positive responses overall. So under engagement, we have cultural and linguistics competence, relationships, and school participation. Last year, when we administered this survey, and we did debate whether or not we should because it was a challenging year, but we still saw generally very positive responses from 2019 through this year, we've seen little variation in the overall responses from our students, which is a good, good sign. In environment, this is broken down into physical environment, instructional, mental health, as well as discipline. Again, we've seen consistent results over the course of the last three years and how students respond to questions related to these four categories. Safety is broken down into emotional safety, physical safety, bullying and cyberbullying, substance abuse, and emergency readiness. These, again, have been very consistent, you'll see the one area substance abuse has actually improved since 2019-20 in the student responses. And going along with safety, just to highlight some school safety because I know that there's been a lot of questions related to this. Back in the fall, we did hold a safety panel. We talked about some of the drills that we do on a regular basis at all levels. I also want to remind everyone that we have a district-level safety plan which is available to the public on our website. This is updated annually, and this also provides the framework for building-level emergency response plans. There's a district-wide safety team, and then there's also building-level safety teams. At the building-level safety teams and the plans, these are confidential, they are not available to the public, but they are shared with law enforcement. They're detailed plans for each building. They include things such as building maps, emergency procedures, contact information, incident guides, and evacuation and reunification plans. An example, some of the district, some of the events that we plan for are listed here, and many people don't often think of these as safety plan issues, but they, we plan for all of those with first responders. Here's an example of a building-level plan if there was a severe weather emergency, so we identify what the school district's role is, what the community's role is, and then you'll see in the action guidelines who's responsible and what action steps should be taken for this particular emergency. Some of the security upgrades we've done over the last few years and continuing, moving forward, are looking at making our entrances more safe and secure. The general recommendation is to have a two-door entrance system with a protocol for scanning people in, which we've done at most of our buildings and are looking to do that as part of the next bond. Every classroom door has been retrofitted, so there's an immediate shut-and-lock feature. Our security badges, which we all have, offer more control, they've been upgraded, and access. We also have improved camera access, and those are also integrated with our badge system. And our maintenance teams respond immediately to any issues with doors or windows that are not closing or locking appropriately. Just recently, we also did hire a firm to conduct an audit of the district focusing on access to all school district buildings and grounds, security monitoring, communications, and emergency management plans. So we'll be getting a report from, reports from them, I would imagine, within the next few weeks. In regards to some of our technology upgrades, now all classrooms' phones can dial 911, that wasn't the case in the past. Also, if a 911 call is made, anyone on the safety team is alerted with a text message as well as when a lockdown is called. We also have two SROs, and I do get a lot of questions about SROs in the elementary schools and why we don't have them. So I just want to make it clear that although their primary assignment is the high school or the middle school, they do actively work in our elementary schools with the building safety teams and provide assistance to the administration or staff whenever is needed. We also, in partnership with the Bethlehem Police, do have a confidential tip line, this is on our website, and this can be used at any time for any community member, student or parent, who has concerns about someone doing self-harm or harm to others, they can call this 24/7 to alert someone. And moving on to the capital project, we have the plan that was developed in 2019, and it was approved in 2021. The project is not to exceed $40,693,000. We did review the scope in the fall, obviously with the prices of things, our budget is up, so we did have a couple presentations to discuss changes to the scope of that. You can see that since 2020, the CPI is up significantly as well. The project currently is still at state ed under their review, but the goal is to, once we get approval from state ed, to move forward with that with the hopes of beginning construction this spring to stay on the timeframe. The project overview consists of $32.5 million in hard cost construction, 5.9 in incidental cost, and then about 2.2 for a contingency currently. In our timeframe, again, we're hoping to go out to bid sometime in February. We're hoping that we receive approvals by the end of March with the goal of beginning construction in the spring. The timeframe for completion of the project is fall of 2024. And we have some slides that just highlight what areas will be under construction and when. The timeframe in the areas that will be worked on during designated times have been shared with all of the buildings, if all goes according to the timeframe. So there will be certainly areas that will be not usable, so there may be some fields that are not usable, which teams may have to, you know, find alternative fields. The middle school auditorium, I think, is listed on the next slide, will not be accessible for a little over a year, so we'll need to consider that for music and performing groups. Most of the other buildings will not have significant areas that are inaccessible, but we'll make sure everyone is aware of those areas. Generally, the bigger areas like the auditorium or the library have the most impact on the buildings, so we'll work with the administrators on relocating activities and events for And on to enrollment. We always work with the Capital Region Planning Commission on getting our enrollment projections. So they generally do a five-year enrollment projection report, and the highlights of our most recent report, which was shared in January, is that enrollment has declined since 2006-7 just over 21%. Over the next five years, the total is expected to decrease just about under 2%, with the most significant decrease being at the high school level, and that's simply because the declines have already been seen at the elementary and middle school level. So the total enrollment projected for next year is about 4,100 students. You can see the decline here, just in graphic form. This is the five-year projection and looking to really level off from the peak back in And the Capital Region Commission gets their information from a lot of different sources, but they're essentially, they look at birth data over a period of time, and you can see that enrollment, the birth data in the district has declined slightly over the course of the last several years. You also see the same in enrollment in the New York State fertility rate, again, significant or slightly declining fertility rates over the course of that same time period. I don't remember that in my slideshow. See, they are trying to get me to finish. I'm going as fast as I can. We're also, they also look at housing, in housing, new units, new units expected to be built as well as the housing market. So the number of existing home sales has slowed the past two years. There was a moratorium that has ended, so that may make a slight difference in enrollment, but I don't anticipate that will make a significant difference in the next few years. And the enrollment, what we do use that for is to begin our budget process. So in looking at our budget, obviously, our goal is to balance our budget, and our goal every year when we finish is that our expenses equals our revenue. Our current budget is just over $102 million, and last year, we were very fortunate in that we did not have to use any of our fund balance, which was great, so we're hoping that we'll see, have a similar outcome this year. Looking at the education and value at Bethlehem, if you look at how we compare to the state and Albany County, you'll see in the state, the average per pupil expenditure is about $22,800. Albany County is just over $18,000, and we compare at a little over $17,000. I think that's for, yeah, 2019 data, that's the most recent data available. And we look at our budget expenses, there's generally five areas. We, our most prominent aspect of our expenses is instruction and staffing, and then our larger sources are in student transportation, debt service, and just general miscellaneous expenses. And similarly, for our revenues, we rely on really two sources of revenue, our state aid, which we did just get our state aid runs today, and property taxes. We do get a little bit of revenue from our pilots, our payments in lieu of taxes, and some other miscellaneous revenue, but primarily property taxes and state aid are our main sources. In our budget history, this looks at a 10-year average. You can see that our average budget increase is just about 1.5%, even though there's a few fluctuations from year to year, the average is about 1.5% over 10 years. And similarly, with our tax levy history, that's just about it, 1.5% over a five-year period. The gray bars are the Mattel or the maximum allowable tax levy, the tax cap, and the orange is the levy that we actually went out at. So you can see every year we've been either at or below that cap. And as I said, the state of the schools is the, really, the kickoff to the next phase of our planning and our budget development for 2023-24. So our next, next week's meeting, we will do a budget overview. We'll also then begin with our technology and our transportation budgets. On March 1st, we'll be discussing athletics and operations and maintenance. On March 1st, we'll be discussing athletics and operations and maintenance. On March 15th, that will be our instructional programs, which consist of our general education and special education programs. Our goal is to adopt the budget by April 5th with a budget hearing on May 3rd. May 10th is a meet the candidates night, if that's needed. And May 16th will be the budget vote. So any seniors who are eligible to vote, mark that in your calendars. And I think now you can conclude, and I don't know if anyone has any questions for me.
I have a couple, but does anyone else have questions?
Go ahead.
Just, and they are hopefully quick ones. One is with Parent Square. Is that something that community members who don't have children in the school would be able to sign up for? I'm just thinking.
There is a feature.
On a limited, on a limited basis.
Right.
So if we'll, so right now, community members can sort of sign up for the whole menu, but if it will be on a more limited basis.
Okay. For like district-level news and information.
Okay. Yeah, just in the interest of keeping those people who we don't have children in the school buildings anymore informed of what's going on.
Yep.
In the district. And will that also, I thought I saw something on one of those slides, that will take the place of those reporting and absence forms?
Yes, so we can, we have the ability in Parent Square to add forms to that, to automate that process. So yes, there'll be a lot of forms that now have to be sent back and forth, or even through email. That will be much more automated, and you can do it on your phone or through email, whatever your choices. It will also replace things like, I know teachers use various things like Remind app and ClassDojo. This would replace those as well. So parents will go to one place. If you have more than one child, you'll be able to access all that information for all your children there.
And then on a totally different topic, with respect to the equity walks, when we're done with those, would we be able to kind of get a comparison to where we're at compared to the last time that we did those?
So there's, I think there, so there's two different equity walks. So when we were working with Generation Ready, we had equity walks which were done prior to COVID.
Yeah.
And we actually had Harriet come back, and she, I think, I think she still has one more building to go, but she was going back through those. So we will have some comparison data from prior to COVID and now, based on a similar outcome. The equity walk, that rubric you saw, is really paralleling our observation rubric that we use for teachers. Many of the pieces in that particular rubric is very similar to some of the Danielson rubric that we use to evaluate teachers. So that will be done kind of in conjunction with classroom observation. So that's not a building-wide.
It's two separate?
Yeah, that's not a building equity walk, but we did, we will have the equity reports to share out for the buildings. Yep.
Who else has questions?
I had two, and they're similar to yours.
And you have?
Sounds like Christine's are similar, so.
Mine are very similar to yours. Just the Parent Square, is that going to be available for coach communication with parents and students?
You can use it for clubs and activities, so hopefully that will help streamline that communication.
And then the other question is an equity question as well. When you were sharing the goals, some of the slides had increased sharing of knowledge or information. How are you going to measure some of it, such as grading for equity? So how are you measuring that in the classroom or overall as a district? I don't think it's part of the equity law, per se, because it's on more of an individual classroom level, but I think there's an interest to understand how, what are our goals from information sharing to actually implementing and seeing some change? And how are we measuring it?
Right, so some of that with grading for equity, in continuous improvement, there are targeted instruction, targeted questions as well and feedback, and it's done by department. So we'd be looking at what changes are departments making, and also what changes might we be making as a district, and particularly related to either our grading policies or, policies or grading practices. So I think those would be the outcomes you're talking about, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Bob was next. Bob, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, okay. This has to do with slide 30. It's very quick. It has to do with the tier-one educational expectations.
Yep.
And it just mentions that the expectations were being set for instruction, including the use of non-instructional time. And I was just wondering if you could just explain a little bit about, you know, what is meant by non-instructional time and the expectation, and maybe some examples of what that would look like.
Right, so when we talk about tier-one instruction, generally, you think of the academic piece, which is largely what we're talking about, but we're also talking about the social emotional curriculum, which is a part of our tier-one MTSS process. So looking at, when you're talking about non-instructional time, let's take an example, a simple one of recess. Are students able to transfer the skills they're learning through our social emotional curriculum into recess activities or in unstructured time? So those are what we're looking to try and see if we're making gains in those particular areas. And I say, it's not the easiest area to measure because there's a lot of soft skills, but I think we can measure some of those when we look at our discipline data. Are we seeing decreases in incidences at recess or on the buses or in the hallways, which would hopefully tell us that maybe we're making some progress in that particular area?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then this other, my other, my only other question has to do with some of the action steps for the increased community engagement. And you talked about expanding the recruitment pathways and some of the partnerships that were anticipated with some colleges. And my question is, are we, is the school trying to explore those types of relationships with non, you know, sort of different pathways, like trade schools or trade unions even, on to try to, you know, get some recruiting in sort of a different pathway so the kids have an opportunity to explore different, different areas?
So we have done some of that in the CTE pathways that our district, we can create pathways. In fact, I think it was prior to COVID, we had some presentations on those. There's an approval process through state ed and looking at ways students can earn credits in more of a non-traditional format. Also, some of those, also are, we work with Cap Region BOCs and their CTE program. They really have a lot of leverage with some of the trade unions and things such as that to try and create direct partnerships with, in areas such as, you know, manufacturing and welding and culinary. We're always open to trying to do that, but, you know, it's, it's a little harder with a single district trying to make those connections. It's easier if we work with CTE to make those connections for our kids. But we do have some additional CTE pathways for students who want to earn credit in a more, you know, not the traditional path.
Sure.
Yep, yep.
John, do you have a question?
Yes, just one. The recruiting pathway in terms of working with Clarkson, what do you see the timeline for something like that?
So there's a, they're working with the state now, so I don't know if you have any updates on the state.
We don't. So our last two or three meetings with Clarkson have been postponed because the state, it's sort of like, it's similar to the NSF grant that we did with Ciena for computer science. It's not through NSF, but it's a similar type of grant. So it's a grant through the state. So that's what's kind of holding us up right now, but essentially, we're in a holding pattern until Clarkson can get the state to finalize their application so that we can then move forward.
Right.
But the framework of it is that, yeah, we would end up with a residency teacher whose coursework is partially funded through state and partnerships, and then that's why they have to do the three years of the district afterwards.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're hopeful that we can move forward with that.
Catherine?
I just want a couple things. You mentioned the updates on the website, and I just wanted to say, as a parent, thank you. It's really streamlined, and it's, it's come a long way. I also really appreciate all the work around accessibility and making sure that we're translating everything as much as possible for as many folks as possible. I think that's tremendously important, and I know the communications department and technology and everybody has been hard at work on all of those things, so thank you. Just a couple of like, kind of basic questions, I think, like what does this mean? Going back to slide 30, we're talking about the science teachers implementing a new curriculum this year aligned with the new science standards at New York State and the three, associated with the three-dimensional philosophy. Can you just, sorry, for those of us who aren't in science classes, what is the three-dimensional philosophy? What does that mean?
Do you want to address that?
I actually can't speak to that. We have, in March 17th, we actually have Jen Gagnon hosting a training.
Cool.
So I hope to learn more then.
Great.
But the standards themselves, we introduced the new standards and kits maybe three or four years ago. Jen did a presentation at one of the board meetings where, I think you're looking at ALPEL, if I remember correctly. But so now, one of the things the state has done is, for the, they used to have a fourth grade test and an eighth grade test, and they're now moving that to a fifth grade and an eighth grade. And those both used to have a performance component to them, where the students would come in, they'd have to do like, sort of a bunch of labs on a specific day, and they were sort of graded on it. So they moved away from that and done, it's now more similar to like the high school approach where there's four, they're calling them investigations, that students have to do over the course of third, fourth, and fifth grade, or sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then the school will maintain sort of portfolios of the student work, and then that's sort of what is their piece for the assessment. It's not a separate graded piece.
Right.
That's the big shift there. I will report back.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I love learning all of the, all the new terms, so I appreciate that. And then just a question about lab school. How are we seeing demand, supply and demand there? How, do we have any sense of what's coming in the coming school year?
So they're just in the process of applying. The eighth graders are making their selections, and then they apply to lab school.
Yeah.
So we don't have numbers yet, but judging from last year's numbers, in ninth grade, we had a good turnout, so we're hoping that we'll see the same for the coming year.
Did we have, did we have to say no to anybody, or was it?
Last year, we did have more than the number that we accepted, so.
That's really, really neat. Thank you. And those are my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors with us tonight who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now it would be the time to come up to the microphone. Next, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through five. Still moved? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through six. Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through four. Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item D, other action items. It has been requested that we are going to pull out item two because we have a board member who will need to recuse herself for that item. So it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the action item one and three. Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And then it is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action item number two. That's the volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers exemption.
This is, oh, sorry, this is where I will recuse myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors with us tonight who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come up to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. On February 13th at 6:30, we have our rescheduled policy committee meeting. This is the committee meeting that was supposed to be on the Monday that we had our snow day weather event, and so the policy committee rescheduled it for the 13th. Our next regular board meeting is on February 15th here at the high school at 7:00, anticipating executive session at 6:00. And the meeting after that is on March 1st here at the high school, starting at 7:00, anticipating executive session at 6:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. And our big students, if you want to come up, and don't forget to sign out.